I can hear you.
On today's, there we go. Okay. On today's agenda, under section four, public hearing liquor resolutions, I'll be calling items four A and four B together. And then we have resolutions, action only, item six A through six O. We'll vote on those resolutions. And then on section nine, we have resolution, action only. We'll also have a motion to amend or accept a substitute resolution.
For which item, Sony?
Nine A.
Okay.
Okay. You said we have an amendment for nine A?
Yeah, it would just be a substitute resolution for that item.
Submitted by?
Um, I s-
Too many questions. Too many questions.
That's one item that I do need to clarify that with city attorney. And then we have, on our pending list date certain, there is a motion to substitute the ordinance as well. But we have action on this on eight thirty-one twenty, so I need clarification if we're going to do the motion today to accept the substitute ordinance.
Which one is that?
It's pending list date certain, item twelve A.
I think we should go ahead and do it today so that it can be published, so people can see it, and council members can look at it as well.
Okay.
Wait, but we haven't seen it.
That's why it's being substituted today, so that we can, this is the one that Sandra has worked on, and we've agreed to that it's being substituted.
I'm open to the substitution today, or if council members would like to read the substitution before we accept it, why don't we take a few moments during directors and we'll get copies? And then we can make the motion or not during council session.
Or you could discuss the changes during directors, and then that would certainly be good enough for me.
Nice to have copies.
Good. Thank you. Were you going to make copies? Were you reading our minds?
Uh, copies, sure. Yes. Absolutely. Send copies to everyone.
Could you have copies of that twelve A amendment to the sign code?
The substitution?
Yes.
Yeah.
Could you get us copies of it soon as you can?
Hard copies at this point would be better.
Yeah, we all don't keep computers.
Okay. I can bring down hard copies.
Okay. Could you get some? That'd be great.
Okay.
And for our pending list, I just was a part of an email that was sent to me, possibly some emotion for items thirteen E, F, and G.
Correct. Probably have a motion to suspend our rules, bring that back with amended price.
Okay.
Today. And vote on it.
Would we need to suspend our rules?
Pardon me?
Would we need to sus-
Yes, we do, because we're supposed to have, with no date certain, we're supposed to have had two weeks' notice.
Okay.
And so what we're gonna do at this point, as I understand, is go ahead, suspend our rules on the notice, and then bring these up for vote.
Okay.
And there will be an amended, amended agreement, right? With the number, with the number changed, and that was it? The only thing that changed was the value.
Okay. Do we limit any public involvement or engagement by suspending the rules on notice, public notice?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Was it a public hearing item or an action only?
It was action, action delayed. It was action only.
Action only, then we've had our public hearing. We're fine. We can suspend.
Mm-hmm. Clarice Mudd.
That's all I have for today's agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Director Lopez is in the room. And then we'll go to the mayor's. First, we'll start with her. She needs to get back to work. There's what?
There's a pandemic on a what? Thank you. Good afternoon. Today, we have, we're reporting a total of a little over thirty-six hundred cases. We got seventeen from yesterday, and we're still waiting for our data to come in for today. But I just wanted to let you know, in July, we had thirteen seventeen cases. And that was thirty-six percent of all the cases reported so far in comparison. We had nine hundred and seventy cases in May and five hundred and thirty in June. And so far in August, we're really close to the five hundred and seventy-three right now. Forty-seven percent of all our positive cases are reported, recovered. And as we talked before about that twenty to twenty-nine age group, that number, at the end of last week, that group represents thirty-five percent of our cases that we've had reported. Our positivity rate for the cases reported last weekend, the Saturday, is six point nine. So our overall is six point seven. We went up a little bit last week over the five point five from the week before. Our testing numbers are down a little bit. We had four thousand tests two weeks ago, and we're at twenty-five hundred from last week. So we're checking into maybe some of the reasoning for that. The one thing, though, I do know that people who are having symptoms are also still getting tested at the Brian drive-through in CHI, so I know people are accessing testing. We brought up a test Nebraska site at UNL and at Nebraska Westland. So we're getting reports and now about those, and you probably heard, UNL is working, we're working with them on a website, a dashboard for their website, so that'll probably be up by Wednesday or so. But you probably heard, one of the sorority houses is quarantined right now. And LPS launched their dashboard, I think it was Friday or so, so they have a dashboard up now as well. So they had four cases reported, and then forty-five staff, LPS staff, are in quarantine right now. We're still looking at the total number of cases at UNL, but they've got a really great public health team. And Westland also has some good resources for us to reach out to and get contact tracing underway right away. Our hospital usage remains good, contact tracing, as long as we get the test results, we can get in and get that accomplished within twenty-four hours. We're currently monitoring three hundred and forty-four individuals. So since the beginning of the pandemic, we've monitored nearly seven thousand individuals in our community, and it's really been helpful because we've been able to monitor them for symptoms. And if they start having symptoms, we've been able to get them in and get them tested right away and assist them with what their needs might meet. So last week, thirty-three percent of our cases were all connected to a known positive case, so that's helpful. Even though we had a slight uptick in cases this past week, our numbers are still fifty-one percent lower than the number of cases on seven twenty-five, so that's pretty encouraging. We're continuing to give, we have over five thousand test kits now out to the long-term care and assisted living places. And we're gonna, we received a grant from the National Association of City-County Health Officials, and we'll be working on mitigation of communicable disease and long-term care settings with them. So I'm gonna end there. Are there any questions you have?
Yes, Jane.
Um, Pam, thank you very much. Can you tell us a little bit about some of the mitigation or discussions with the bars now that the students are gonna be coming back, and how's that going?
Thanks for asking. We actually did a Zoom call with the downtown bars last Wednesday afternoon. It went really well. They were able to share some of the things that they're doing with each other, some strategies that are working. We're continuing to do surveillance and letting them know what we're seeing. We're working with police and just seeing what's happening downtown and giving guidance and information. And then we'll continue to follow up. We'll be having another Zoom meeting with them probably in the next week or so, but we're seeing a lot of improvements.
That's great.
That we hope to see.
Good.
Yeah. Director Lopez, I am curious, I think it's great that we're working with the universities in town, and they're each building their own dashboards. But can you tell me, will the, do you know if the University of Nebraska's dashboard will look like LPS and that they only track the cases per week instead of sort of the running total? And does Westland's, I haven't looked at Westland's dashboard.
I'm not sure about Westland's yet. The, I can't answer that. I've looked at the dashboard in the prototype form for the university, but I think they're really looking at the week, and so is LPS, just in an effort to be transparent with their community about what's happening there. And they're going from August twelfth forward, and they'll be, the university will be reporting from athletics, the Health Center, and Test Nebraska on their site. But I also, that gives me an opportunity to also reinforce that we're monitoring all positive cases in our community. That's all gonna be shown on the Health Department dashboard.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Just a little spray.
Mayor's office.
All together now.
Just real quick, just on behalf of the mayor's office, we wanted to let you know that planning is holding an open house tomorrow evening here in the chambers on the transitional living topic that clearly we're moving quickly on within the schedule of the moratorium that you've put in place for us. It'll be held from six to seven thirty, and it also will be available via Zoom if people sign up by noon tomorrow. So that is happening, and that's a good, very important event for us to hear from folks that are thinking about this and have an interest. We really want to see what the, both the reaction is to the discussion draft that we've put together internally, as well as just hear from people and their ideas. So we're looking forward to that. Also let you know that there is a virtual public event for the update of the comprehensive plan that's ongoing. It has been happening since July. We will be closing that virtual public event at the end of this week. There is a survey attached to that, so if you have not participated in it, we'd love to hear from you. And then if you wanted to let your contacts know that it's still out there and available, there's a lot of good information about our growth scenario possibilities and kind of trying to get a gauge for what the community is thinking about, how we want to grow, and where, what direction, things like that. So that is happening, but will close at the end of this week. So with that, I certainly can answer any questions you might have on those events that are happening.
Any questions for Director Carey?
I have a question.
Pardon me. Good afternoon, David. I have a question a little bit about the meeting tomorrow night. Are, what's the format? Are you going to present something, and then the public reacts? Will they have something in writing?
Yeah, very good question. So what we're going to do is we're going to not spend too much time at the beginning, but we will have a formal presentation. There'll be some PowerPoint slides that we'll be displaying and walking folks through what the discussion draft has in it. And we'll talk a little bit about how we got to this point and, you know, the timing that we're working under to get something on the books within the limits of the moratorium. And we really want to kind of limit that too much so that we can hear people's reactions and then get their, answer their questions as well as receive from them some of their ideas. That's the format that we're gonna use tomorrow night.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the mayor's office, wanted to just update you, and you should have all received an official invite for Saturday's Scooters Educational Launch Program that will be this Saturday. If you had, it was right before I came down here, so you should be sitting in your email box after this. But it is Saturday down in the Haymarket, ten to two. Looks like the weather should be perfect if you want to come out and learn about the scooters, take a little spin on the scooters. We'll also have bike share there as well with some of the electric bikes as well. So it'll be an active transportation opportunity down in the Haymarket. It'll be right next to the farmer's market, so it should be a good opportunity for a good turnout. We're looking forward to it. If you have any questions, let me know.
So this will be right next to the, it'll be part of the Haymarket. It's not over in the parking lot across?
It's not. It's going to be on Seventh Street. We're gonna close off that area there, so we have about a block where we can actually use the scooters, and people can enter their names for drawings for free helmets and have representatives for, from both vendors, as well as other people stopping by and making sure that we have all the information there.
Can we nominate council members for who would be the first to test drive the scooters?
Oh, we should come up with some kind of competition to figure out who wins that first.
Councilperson Rabel. Did you have a question?
I do have a question, but Liz, it's not on the items you presented. It's a transportation question. But I think, you know, we heard at our joint city-county commons meeting about BNSF now integrating back in, using their railroad tracks through a lot of neighborhoods. And, you know, it's, without a doubt, it's gonna impact our traffic. And in some of my conversations, I've suggested, is there a way for them to communicate to us via Waze, W-A-Z-E, so that people can access it on an app? And they can see, how do we get something like that going as a municipality? Do we, you know, BNSF said, well, they don't want to be the ones notifying Waze. But how do other municipalities notify Waze when there's road construction going on and we are gonna temporarily close? I know we have a great website, but this is real-time information that people are gonna need, because then they can make a detour wherever and whenever appropriate, when they know that the train leaves Hobson Yard, just like a bus schedule.
Yep.
But, you know, they're not gonna be a consistent schedule, but it's gonna be real-time schedule. So how do we work with that?
And I don't have the answers for you yet, but I will tell you, that has been on our list of things to try and hope to find the technological means to be able to do that. Our Waze app was the first one that's come up. Roger Feigard also has had that kind of come up in the back of his brain as well. So we are looking into that. I don't have the answers yet. I hope that we'll be able to get something, whether it's through Waze or something else, but some way that we can use technology to get that and help people maneuver alternative routes to kind of go around that. The other thing that we are doing, Roger Feigard is reaching out or has reached out to the university. There are some other, like, live signs that they can say, hey, train approaching, try this route or take this street. So there are some additional technology ideas out there that we'll explore, and those conversations are starting now. I just don't have the answers yet.
Okay. Good to hear.
I had another thought on all this, and I've talked with Roger a few times. And I'm starting to file or put things through Roger. People call and ask, tell him to go to the RTSD and call Roger.
Yes.
He's gonna be putting together all the information and giving out one page.
Yes.
Facts, and he was, needed some stuff from you.
Richard is, or Roger is going to be our point, our main point of contact for both the city and county, so that we have kind of a coordinated voice on that, and we're getting out the same information to everybody. We are also working, Roger is coordinating with our Public Information Officer, Erica Hill, on developing kind of a fact sheet, and we'll constantly be updating that. So if you do get any questions, complaints, those types of things, please send them to Roger Feigard. He is copying me on all of those, so I'm also kept in the loop on what is going on as well. But we'll continuously be updating that. We do also have a meeting Wednesday, I believe it is now, with BNSF and OPPD to kind of start some of the conversations on what can we do to coordinate this as much as possible and have it a minimal, as minimal as possible, impact.
Okay.
That's great. All right. Well, thank you very much.
You bet. Excited for Saturday. I should ask, yes, John, come on up.
You're gonna talk about budget.
Yeah. Just real quick. John Carlsen with the mayor's office, and this is all information that was communicated last week. We just wanted to bring it up about the budget, the final, final budget resolution, which I believe is item nine, and then the substitute resolution. And the substitute resolution mostly represents what Brandon's been talking about, about the final reconciliation of the final property tax values and the notion to use any additional revenues there as a general expense, kind of reserve account for unforeseen budget challenges in this pandemic year. But I always wanted, and I also wanted to note that we sent a couple of cleanups at La Salle also. There was still a reference to a biennial budget, a couple of things that I sent you there in email. There was a reference to an LB, to a bill, instead of the actual state law, which they thought was cleaner. And then the last one was changing the word sufficient to not necessary in that other passage. So you got those, and I assume that you got those, but I thought it can't hurt to stand up and actually say, that's the point in the substitute resolution. You get the main resolution called, and someone offers a substitute. Those are the differences that people will want to discuss. It's the new stuff. Does that make sense?
Okay, yeah. Clarice Mudd. Playing in the mud today, aren't we?
Yes.
We'll muddle our way through it.
All the different moving parts that finally come together, yeah.
Yes, question?
I don't wanna lose the opportunity, John, to ask you a question about the budget. Okay, so I'm in section eight, and those are all the small things. So it's a rate increase for burning permits and on and on and on. And I noticed that A through M are all, they give us two fiscal years. So they tell us if the burning permit is going up in the 2021, they say, here it is, and then in preparation, sort of like a heads up, it's gonna go up five more dollars in 2122. But the water rate increases in eight, no, not eight, six N and six O are only for one fiscal year?
Correct.
What's the reason for that?
It's a good question, and I may have to defer to health or the appropriate department on some of these fees. The ones that I know that are directly associated with the budget are for one year, because we're just doing a one-year budget. So in previous years of the biennial budget, they'd make reference to the both of the budget years.
So they all make reference to two years, except for the water rate. So that was just a-
My first thought on that is it's tied to the capital improvements budget, the CIP budget. It's the reason we're raising the rates.
Oh, okay.
And it's just to, so we have enough money to match the CIP for one year.
Thank you.
I'll double-check on those few ones, though.
And bond indefinitely.
Yeah, because they were the, all the permits and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
I agree, yeah. Let's see what you're seeing. Okay. Anything else from the mayor's office? Okay. Seeing none. Don't see much else on our list here. Our constituents' correspondence that we've received for the week is on here, and it would be available on our director's packet online. would be available on our Director's Packet online. And does anybody else have anything else for this meeting?
Can we talk to some directors?
Pardon me?
Can we talk to some of the directors?
Oh, yes, yes. Do you have some directors you'd like to talk to? Yes, Jane?
Um, Chief.
Okay.
And Johanne Seay.
Okay. Anybody else at this point?
Please, David Carey, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none.
Well, Sandra, were you gonna say something?
No, I'm good.
She is good. This meeting's adjourned.